All right.
Are we good?
Yeah, as best we can.
All right. Thank you all for your patience while we have all these difficulties today. It is June 11th, 2025. It is currently 7:15 PM and I am calling this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. We have all commissioners present as well as John Strong, Hendrick, and I believe Foygi is here too.
Yes, he's on the computer and such, so he's there as well.
All right. It looks like we have six people scheduled to speak. I just want to let you know that public testimony is limited to three minutes. You can have a choice either to make general commentary at the beginning, which would be now, or you can wait until after a presentation and then make a comment after the presentation or before the discussion if you would like. Is there anyone who wants to make public commentary now? No? All right. I didn't think so, but wanted to check. All right, we will move into the announcements. Brian?
I'm not really prepared, but not a lot really to announce, nothing from the commissioners, I don't think. Not as long as I'm saying it in?
Not so much. I mean, we had the one meeting in May, or sorry, the last meeting in May, and still we went over a couple of things there, but nothing.
The last one in May was our housing, how we get here, move around, presentation was well received and a lot of people were on to that. Yeah, I'm actually kind of related.
Brian, could you please speak up in the mic if you'd be able to?
The mic, red stuff.
It's not working, so we'll try to as best we can.
Thank you. I will definitely speak. I can speak louder, I will.
Well, that's good. That told me what we just said now, we definitely presented.
All right, Niles?
Yes.
What do you have for the town?
All right, so in terms of our announcements, we don't have anything at the moment. Obviously, we have what is on the agenda, and we will have more come on some of these items going forward, but nothing else.
On to approval of the minutes. Did everyone get a chance to review the May 14th minutes from the last meeting?
The latest version.
Yes.
It's circulated today, right?
Yep.
Are there any requests, edits, or comments on our items?
I'm going to approve the minutes as written.
I hold off. Sorry. There is no mention of Frank Jameson or Bill Jameson making public commentary under section 7.1. Can we just add that on the bottom of section?
Sure.
Sorry, you're so fast.
I figured. I knew when you said anybody else noticed that.
I know. I think it's important to you there.
It is. I agree.
All right. Can I get a motion?
Re-motion for you to approve the minutes as edited by.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
New business. We have a variance on Grace Cottage's driveway access. Is the applicant present? I know that you're, can you come forward? Before we get started, would the town like to give an overview of this?
Yes. So, the applicant, Renfroger Family Builder, requests a variance from the subdivision regulation 26A2, lot design due to the Maryland State Highway Administration denial of the driveway access on State Route 107. Under the subdivision regulation, section 26A2, planning commission may approve not more than two lots on a private driveway or private private way, provided that the proper showing is made that such an access is adequate to serve the lots for emergency vehicles for installation of public utilities, is accessible for other public services, and is not detrimental to the subdivision of adjacent plans. Further, the code, under the code, the Board of Zoning Appeals has to consider the following in granting a variance. To authorize upon appeal, in specific cases, such variances in the terms of this ordinance that will not be contrary to public interest, where owing to special conditions, particularly to the property, the enforcement of the provisions of this ordinance will result in hardship and injustice. To justify the granting of such a variance, the board must find that the hardship which the petitioner will suffer under the general provisions of this ordinance can be alleviated without affecting the general purpose and intent of this ordinance, and that the granting thereof will not be detrimental to the best interests of the community as a whole. So, the staff analysis, when the preliminary plan for Grace Cottage was approved, there were two driveway entrances, one connecting lot one and three, and a second connecting the lot, lot two, to Fisher Avenue. When the applicant went to install these driveways, Maryland SHA denied access to the Fisher Avenue, the driveway we need from lot two. The state gave two factors for its decisions. First, the state determined that the driveway did not meet the required site distance safety standards. And due to the curve in Fisher Avenue just to the east of the property. Second, the state said SHA will quote "not permit access from the state road if there's an available alternative from the less active local road," by which they mean the one driveway that is connecting lots one and three. The town confirmed these findings directly with SHA. The applicant has provided a solution by adding two pull-offs on the remaining driveway. The town engineer has reviewed this, which is acceptable to the town. Planning commission will provide a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So, that concludes the staff report of the minutes.
Joel?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Would you like to have any testimony or comments to this?
Sure. Thank you for having me, Mr. Hendrick, Mr. Strong. I apologize for my attire. I don't normally dress like this, but I've been in Frederick County Planning Commission for nine hours today. I came straight here. Mr. Hendrick's correct. We wanted to build consistent with the town of Poolsville approved plans, which had two driveways. State Highway did say no, and they've asked us to combine them into one. So, we're here seeking your blessing to do so.
I actually remember when this plan came to us, I said, "It doesn't make sense to have two driveways here. We should have one." It's kind of cool to live out. And then, sure enough, we knew this was probably going to come. We'd have to do the application for a variance because it just doesn't make sense to have two driveways.
There are no real dispositions.
Yeah, nobody told me before I bought it. So, I'm learning that now, but if it's safer, that's fine, you know. I have no objection.
Just to add an preliminary review, we're looking for the state highway, review this. Oh, it's exciting. And then, what it got, that actually, the persons that were going to do the installation, they looked at, said, "No, it's not exciting." And this happens, I think.
Yeah. Look on paper like you could see, and then when you get out there, you can't see.
If your technology's down, are you not looking at the before and the after? Oh, good, good, good. Okay, okay.
We're very efficient system town manager in Princess Park. Just in case we have to.
Exactly like this.
I don't see on here any marking of the, didn't they reserve portion of this for sidewalk?
No.
I thought there was a whole discussion about.
There's a water sewer he's, but there's no.
There's no sidewalkies in this one?
There.
I think we had a discussion about this on this particular property.
There is actually a strip that Mr. Strong mentioned that's parallel to Fisher Avenue, which we need to dedicate at some point.
That's correct.
Go back to my notes. Are there any questions or comments?
No, this is something, Niles, you guys agree with this?
Mm-hmm.
How wide is that joint?
It'll be 16 feet with 12 feet of asphalt.
Entrance is 20 feet minimum.
Okay. Do calculations in my head. We're good. I have no question.
Not to rush anything, but take the motion to approve the variances as proposed. Are we recommending this to the DCA or are we approving it?
It's a DCA.
Yeah, it's a DCA.
Yeah, it goes to the DCA.
Sorry, make a motion. Make a motion, we recommend the DCA, we accept it. I'll stop.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Hope Frederick was just easy for you.
Hmm?
Hope Frederick was just easy for you.
Well, I'm a planning commissioner for Frederick.
Oh, you're one of the.
Yeah, so we had like nine, we had nine cases today. Yeah. Do, do, but this is my first one here with you guys. Do I come back to DCA?
Yes, you will have to come back to the DCA. We will schedule that. There's a notice period of 15 days before we can actually have, so it will be a minimum of 15 days before you come back.
Okay.
We'll work out what that schedule is because the DCA meets as needed. So, it's not a set thing like this is. So, we'll get all those details within the next couple of days.
Okay, all right. Same room?
It will be the same room, most likely the same time. It's usually around seven for those as well.
Okay. Shall I leave?
You're good.
You're welcome to say.
No, I don't know what all these folks are here for, but yeah, it sounds like you've got bigger fish to fry.
There's more permission there.
Yes.
Moving on to 1052, concept plan for 1915 Wooten Avenue, whole house property. Does the town want to give us a overview of this?
Yeah, so they can come up. So, the, the applicant, the applicant proposes combining four public parcels located near 19915 Wooten Avenue into a single subdivision of 44 town homes. Town engineer will provide the technical details in the actual letter in the agenda document, which we'll talk about. However, there's a couple of things to note on this submission. First, this is a concept plan submission, which means, which means first, which means the planning commission can provide feedback on the proposed concept plan. There's no formal approvals to plan at this stage. Second, the applicant has been informed that there's certainly no available water and sewer capacity, but the applicant may proceed to the preliminary plan stage. However, preliminary plan approval will not be granted until such water and sewer capacity is available and allocated by the town commission, per the town attorney. So, that just sort of sets up, those are the guidelines under which all this is happening, just so that everybody is aware. And then, Jon, do you want to go through your notes?
Sure. To reference con, concept plan, proposed downtown, it's called downtown town homes, subdivides appropriate into 46 lots. This is in the PECOM zone, eligible for the overlay zone. The property is bounded by property to the east on his Norris Road. Property to the west is a residential area. The property to the north is commercial in nature, and property to the south is Wooten Avenue. Site bank calls for a private alley that works that are 22 feet in width. The following are also comments. It shows a 30 by 40 top lot. No forest conservation has been addressed. Parking areas are approximately 20 by 25. It's unclear if parking areas are separated by privacy bins for each lot. Open space is shown in combined asset park with a top lot. It should be noted that no, the bio retention facilities do not count towards the open space calculations. Proposed building boxes are 20 by 40. The project would require various properties due to the lot configuration. In other words, so I'll have to do consolidation of properties. It is known that the storm drainage system in the area will need to be improved as part of that development. This may include off-site improvements. In other words, we know that already down at the bottom of the hill, there's a conveyance of storm drainage down towards Fisher Avenue, and that'd be the point where you would pick it up, most likely. So, that's where we're at.
Thank you so much. Welcome, gentlemen. Can you please state your names and your addresses, and then welcome to begin.
Members of the planning commission, my name is Phil Hughes. I work for Charles P. Johnson Associates. We're 17105 Elgin Road in Silver Spring, Maryland. As you're off stress, I was joined with Tom Overberg with Terra Partners, who's Terra Foundry Partners.
Correct.
And he is the contract purchaser. Your address?
Terra Foundry Partners, address 1800 Diagonal Road, Suite 600 Alexandria, Virginia.
And, you know, we met with Niles and John Strong previously, and we did discuss the water issue, so we are very aware of the water issue, and that limits us proceeding through the process and what the requirements are for us to go beyond that as far as the water concern issue. And as John and Niles both said, it's 46 townhouse units, served by, you know, a single alley that's got a connection on Norris and out on Woodard or Wooten Avenue, and to allow fire access and movement entrances on both ends. It's a 3.38 acre, or 3.83 acre tract. So, we're happy to answer any questions. You know, we wanted to come and sit with you guys at the concept plan and get feedback, you know, so we could incorporate it as we move forward, you know, and hopefully go on to the preliminary plan process next.
Can you tell me what the existing lots, what structures or what does it look like?
I believe there is one single family house on one of the lots, on the corner lot. The rest of them, as I understand it, are vacant, and there's nothing on them at this point in time. But there is, there is no forest stand at this time either on any of those lots. They're pretty much open field at this point in time.
I'd like to, I'd like to, how to say this? I'd like to hear, I mean, we've heard your presentation, and I'd like to hear the feedback and the questions and answers and, you know, digest this for a week or a month, and then give my comments and feedback next time personally. And I just want to say I'm glad that, you know, there's, we're at this like weird stage in Poolsville where there's like, we're close to being like to 6,500 suggested cap that our comprehensive plan says. And it seems like everybody's trying to sort of get, you know, get their properties in at the last minute and, you know, there's a lot of things happening right now. It's, I'm glad there's a little bit of a pause, we can catch up and figure out what the water situation is and everything, but that's all I have right at this time.
All right, I think it might be a good time then. I have additional comments, but I would like to actually hear from those who've signed up to speak. Let's give, if you don't mind, we give an opportunity for people to speak, and then I actually might have you guys come back up because I do have additional questions, and I'll give you the opportunity to respond.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
All right. My favorite person, Mr. Jerry Kielukowski, can you please come up?
No, I need to.
You're good?
Yeah.
All right, I will check you out.
Scary, isn't it?
He's checked out a lot fair where I.
That's so.
Are you feeling okay?
I'm not having an out of body experience, no.
Is your left arm, do I need to comment? Monica?
Yes.
Would you like to come up? Please state your name and your address.
My name is Monica Mendoza. My husband Wilfredo Portillo, and we have a property on 17611 Norris Road. And when, so we moved to Poolsville back in 2011, and it has always been a beautiful, a small town, charming little town, where we have started to raise our kids. And so, we're just, I just feel like so many houses are coming into Poolsville, like all of these developments. And now, there's one right there in front of our property, and we actually run our landscaping business out of that property. And like a while back, we were told that, oh, we actually had like gravel in the back, and we were supposed to go and put in bio retentions and sediment controls, and we're actually still dealing with Montgomery County about that. So, it's like, why are we putting in more concrete and more building if you guys want us to keep it green? So, that's, that's my take on this, all of this block and concrete coming in. So, I just would like to keep it a little greener right there on Norris. I think it's, it's pretty. It's, there's beautiful, there's a tree that's beautiful in the fall, and like I said, it's, traffic is already, you know, going a little crazier than before. And there's like a school, and you can't really see the hill, and there's a lot of factors coming into safety when people are driving down Fisher. It used to be a little slower, and now it's a little, people are just racing past, and that's why we've had to put in the lights so that people can slow down. So, just a lot of factors that I just, I'm not on the side of more developments to Poolsville. Sorry. No, that's mine.
Anything else?
Uh, let me see. Oh, no. I think, how many seconds do I?
Give me this extra four.
No, I, I think, I think I, I made my peace here, and I just love Poolsville. That's it. Of course, of course, thank you.
All right. Thomas McPassell?
You got him, you got him. Perfect, that's fine. It's good.
Well, but yours is all right.
All right.
Welcome, Thomas.
Hey, thank you. I'm Thomas McPassell. I live at 17119 Batesville Road, and I heard this was going to be proposed, so that's why I came. I definitely don't want no more development in town. One of the reasons why is Pat Hammond's study, his middle model basis says we don't have enough water for the development that we already have, that we have going in. So, I really, and he actually used to write a lot of policies for MDE and the process of dealing with Mr. Peoples, who was his supervisor right now. But, you know, more development here, and also, one of the things is that everybody that I talk to in town, every once I hear something in town, people want more development and all that kind of stuff, but very rarely, most of the people I talk to don't want no more development. They want to keep, you know, Poolsville, you know, small. Originally, the master plan I thought was 5,500, and then went up to 6,500. Just because it's 6,500 doesn't mean we have to go to 6,500. I've lived in very populated areas before, and I moved to Poolsville because I don't want to be in a big populated area. You know what I mean? That's not what I want. You know what I mean? And most people I talk to around here don't want it, you know? So, I know a lot of people trying to rush to get the stuff in. Montgomery County is rezoning. They're already talking about putting more magnet programs in other schools, which is going to lower the test scores, which will actually lower the resale value of people's houses, how fast they're going to sell. So, I think people are trying to get their stuff in. I understand the development's been in the process for years. The Willer property, I don't know if that was originally zoned for subdivision. I don't think, I think it was a couple of years back. It was, you know, redid it. Also, with the Pat Hammond study from 1997, there is the overallocation on horse prints for the amount of people that they had for the emergency for water supply. And I'm trying to get all that paperwork right now to approve all that stuff from Mr. Peoples. But basically, I don't want more, no more development in town. You know what I mean? And most people I talk to don't want it. You know what I mean? There's plenty of places to live if you want a Starbucks in every corner. I've lived in them, you know what I mean? I find it wanting, so, but if people want to live in there, Urbana's right around the corner. Have fun, you know what I mean? Plenty of houses there to buy, you know? But that's basically my thing, is I don't want no more development. I don't think most people here in town don't want it. And also, I remember there was a survey, I guess, or whatever. Are those available for us to see the surveys, the past surveys of what the townspeople want it?
Yeah, they're in the comprehensive plan online.
They're online, okay, all right. So, because it's hard to believe, because everybody I talk to are like, more development, oh my gosh, oh my gosh, oh my gosh. So, I don't think I'm the only one.
All right. You are right up three.
All right, thank you.
I would just respond to you by saying, you know, thank you first of all. I think we're all intimately familiar with the water problem or potential problem, and so we're well versed in it, and we're on top of it. I know the commissioners are on top of it. And that's why Niles, the town attorney, and Niles worked out the situation where like everything's going to be on hold until we kind of figure out what's going on there. And as far as like, you know, development, I see some of the stuff online about like, you know, the commissioners are just letting everybody develop, like, you know, it's not, to some extent, we don't have like a lot of say. We can shape the developments, but if somebody owns property, that property is zoned, and they want to do something within that zoning, it's really difficult for us to say, you know, arbitrarily say, you know what, like residents don't want any more development, kind of can't do that. Like now, if there's no water, that's one thing, you know, or we can shape the development, like in this case, maybe the ability is not appropriate, you know, there are tools, but we can't just say, you know what, no development. So, just, you know, something to add to that.
I'm working on it.
But I hear you. I appreciate everything you're saying.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Jim Michaels?
Is it your, is your phone?
No.
Oh, wow, we got another phone here.
That's the recording device.
Oh, my, okay. Put it right over here, all right. Hello, everyone. Okay. What I have to say is, I think, very, very important. I know that all of you have thought about water, but I want to share with some information from a different context about water, the water supply. First of all, I believe that we're significantly overextended development-wise in Poolsville. I think the 63 homes here, before we even built those, we were overdeveloped as far as water supply. Now, why do I say that? Water supply was looked at and said, well, we got enough, you know, we have the same system of water the last 10 years, and minus 20% one way or the other, we're okay, we're in good range. Except, their climate change, what the projection is around climate change is that we will have significant drought, significant drought for months, possibly years. It will affect Poolsville. We're not on sacred ground, okay? It'll affect everyone. And the question is, we, if we put more in, and I think it was a lousy decision to put this in, but it's happened, okay? It's in my backyard, is that if we make this kind of decision, I believe we will be putting Poolsville in harm's way. Because if we have significant drought over years, we either better have a pipeline to Lake Michigan and be able to pay for that water, or we're screwed. Okay? And I'm saying that seriously. If you look at any of the scientists around water, we're not looking about 20 or 30% off in this and that. I'm talking about blow away, no water in that. What is that going to do to our property, our living conditions? It is going to significantly reduce what it feels like to live in Poolsville, and we will be surviving rather than thriving. So, if you want Poolsville to thrive, stop developing, we don't have the water. We might have the water today, tomorrow, but when we're building, we're looking at 30, 40, 50, 70 years out. That's what we're looking at. The projection, when we look out, is dim, it's dire. And that is happening sooner than later. If you look at it, the scientists recently upped the ante in terms of how dire it is, and what we know about it is the intensity of the droughts will become more and more, and we don't, we don't have the water. I don't care what people come in, the developers want to say, well, we'll build a drill or a well or whatever. No, the water's not going to be there. It will dry up because we, if we have significant, and we will, it's not, again, I want to repeat, it's not an if, it's when. It's not an if, it's a when, and all the scientists tell us that Poolsville and everybody else will be affected in a serious, that's why I worry about these 63 properties, not just because they're in my backyard and they drill every day for eight hours, but because they are going to suck up a lot of water, and I don't think we needed the 63 homes. What we do need is a long-term plan for water. So, if, I don't, I haven't seen it, I haven't seen the big hole that goes us to one of the Great Lakes or whatever. We don't have unlimited water in that. The scientists say you're nuts if we do this. I'll tell you that across the board. I've researched this, and I'd like to hear any comment about this because it blows me away that we're even considering more development in another 44 units or whatever.
Well, I don't think really, at this point, we're really considering that, is, you know, the applicant has the right to come in and make their case.
Yes, they do.
But, but at this point, as you've heard, you know, we are, we are, everything's on hold, and we're trying to figure out the water situation. We also have scientists, you know, we've employed Kathy Bim as a town hydrologist from a very respected agency. I know Wade and Niles are working with Pat Hammond, who, Thomas, right? Who, Thomas, you know, he cited that report, and that report's a little bit different than Kathy Bim's report, you know, that's being taken into consideration, and then we're working with MDE too around the parking environment, they have thoughts on it too. So, like, you know, we're not just sort of out here doing a crap shoot.
I know, I know that. I'm not, I'm not saying you're just kind of drawing the dice in the blind.
But I want to let you know that, like, we're listening to science, and we're listening to like, you know, residents too, obviously, but this is, you know, we're being very, very cautious about this. I think, I think typically we build in, Brian, what is that, 30% buffer too on top of like the water we have allocated?
So, yes, it was 30%. There's a 30% buffer that was previously in the allocation plan set aside. So, so part of the discussion going forward is about where we are and what, and. So, so part of the discussion going forward is about where we are and what, and sort of future, um, conditions, so just drought conditions and things like that, to determine our capacity. And that's one of the things that we have to do with M D E. We're, we're, we've been working with, Kathy's been doing, um, with us, a, a capacity management plan. So all those things are, are part of the science process that we are going through to determine, um, uh, sort of the next steps and what we need to do. And we'll talk about that.
I would suggest instead of thirty percent.
We, we're not, we're not scientists.
No, I know that. And I'm not either.
If that scientist come before this, this, uh, commission and the planning, and the, uh, the town commissioners and present it and they are reported and you're welcome to, to watch it to get an idea of what those scientists think about the.
When are they coming here?
They've been here, it's recorded.
It's on here too.
Yeah, they were here last month.
Yeah, and what are they saying in a sentence or two?
I think it's not the best use of our time to go.
Okay, that's okay. We don't have to go in that. But what I would suggest, and I know my three minutes is up, yeah.
I will say, I'm speaking.
Yes.
That you should probably, uh, remain here for our next old business where we discuss water resiliency.
Okay, we're, are we gonna just sit tonight?
This is our next topic.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
And Jim, if you contact Town Hall, they can probably tell you, I wanna speak for you, the, the dates that, that the scientists were here.
Yes.
With a big water meeting back in April.
Yeah.
Yes, it's, uh, and I'll give you the dates, that's fine.
Yeah.
Um, and then also, uh, on our website is the presentation, uh,
Okay.
presentation from that, you can find Pat Hammond's presentation, things like that are on our website. So that gives you the latest details that we, that we have given.
I, I'm not here to complain. I am here for the best interests of the town, long range. Okay. Yeah, and I know you guys are too. I'm not.
Nobody wants to have, you know, like, more, you know, nobody wants to be secure in water more than me and probably everybody here. But we live here too, we don't wanna have to like, you know.
I know.
We don't wanna have to go like, you know, facing people in town and.
Yeah, we wanna get out of here. We don't have water. It's gotta ration it all the time.
We're taking it very seriously.
Okay, thank you.
Ashley Swenson? Hey, guys.
Hey, Ashley.
Can I stand over here while I talk? Yeah, is that okay?
The main thing is, is loud enough, yeah, if you wanna, or hold it, that's one too.
My name is Ashley Swenson and I live at one nine nine two-two Wooton Avenue, which is, uh, right here. This is my driveway. So I have, I have some personal feelings about this development. Um, and I just wanna say first of all that I have all of the same concerns about water. I appreciate everything that y'all are saying about making certain that whatever development we do approve is appropriately supported. I'm not gonna hash over that again. I'm gonna point out a couple of other things that I think specifically for this development are potential causes of concern. So like I said, this is my driveway. My record for trying to pull out of my driveway at the time when the high school is in session is eighteen minutes. That's how long I have sat at the end of my driveway, waiting for a break in traffic on Wooton Avenue, so that I can pull out. Wow. And you're talking about adding maybe ninety cars in that are gonna pull out right in that same place? That's not gonna work. I don't know how else to say it. There's also an incredible amount of foot traffic on those sidewalks, on that road. There are high school students, for better or for worse, who are stopping in the middle of the road to let their friends in and out of cars. This is not a place where we can support an additional ninety people going to work at the time that the high school is loading up its kids in the morning. It's just not viable. I don't know how else to say it. If you don't believe me, I will make you a cup of coffee. You can sit in the end of my driveway. You can watch it happen. School's out. You'll have to wait till September, but trust me, it's a, it's a great show. This particular section on Norris Avenue two, I think, and my neighbor would probably echo this, it's become increasingly more difficult to turn onto Fisher Avenue from Norris here. The sight, the visibility and the speed and the, the number of cars that are coming through town. It's, it's challenging.
Come out now that there's a U-Haul truck inside there. That should be changed.
So again, this entrance here onto Norris and thinking that people are gonna pull over onto Fisher here is an additional issue. Even if you were to close this off and say, oh, everybody, I'll go over here, like, it's, it's still gonna create a, a traffic issue this way. And I think particularly, I mean, we're talking about increased traffic on Wooton Avenue because we just have all those other townhouses that are under construction down at C V S as well. So, you know, on a personal level, am I excited about looking out and seeing forty-six townhouses across the street from my house? Or do I think that's gonna do great things for my property value? No. I recognize that, like Martin said, these people own that property and they have a right to do with it as they wish and that my personal feelings don't enter into that. But whatever we're going to let happen here, it has to be something that brings positive things to Poolsville. And right now, with this density level, I don't see anything good happening for anybody except for, pardon me, gentlemen, the developers' pocketbooks. I don't even know if we have the demand in Poolsville for this many townhouses on top of what's going in at C V S. And I wouldn't be the person who would know that, but if these end up sitting empty, how does that help?
Give just a moment. Take a few minute break. We lost a question.
Where do you go?
Yeah, thank you.
Water. Turn it on in the water.
All right. Steven Kenny, if you could come up, state your name and address, please, sir.
Hello, my name's Steve Kenley and, um, I live at one nine nine one six Wooton Avenue, right next to my neighbor who just spoke very eloquently. Um, I support everything. I, basically, she stole my thunder with coming up here to outline this. I mean, I agree with her about my, the price of my house and everything else, but that is beside the point. I literally, I laughed when she said it took eighteen minutes to get out of her driveway. I purposely back in and I backed my wife's car and then she yells at me all the time, why are you doing this? I said, 'cause you don't try to get out at eight o'clock in the morning. And eighteen minutes is probably pretty good for backing out of the driveway and trying to get out. Wooton Avenue is secondary road compared to Fisher. And where she, where they're having the people come out is gonna pull right into her driveway, which is gonna cause chaos. And she's right, people drop their kids off, whether there's construction there or not. I've lived in this property for more than fifteen years and they always drop their kids off. The amount of kids that travel up and down our road that we have to pick trash up after, but that's a second point, uh, at lunchtime and during and after school is tremendous. So the likelihood of someone getting injured on that road because of the traffic, let alone if you come out on Norris, I thought these properties are gonna drop out at the same spot. So when they said coming out of Norris and trying to get onto Fisher is a problem, that is correct. We're going to end up, if you have six, is it sixty-three homes here?
Yes.
And forty-six over here, two cars for each home? You're adding what, another hundred and twenty, hundred and thirty cars? We're gonna have to put a traffic light up here at the corner by Bassett's.
No, sir, you will not. This is my professional duty.
I'm just saying, you're going to have that much volume of traffic that's increasing there and coming in and out. And I think the traffic, the safety, let alone the area. You know, this is, people move here for Small Town USA and, you know, this is the last town in Montgomery County that is like this. So if there's anything we can do to keep it, I'm all in favor.
Thank you so much.
Yep, thanks.
All right, was there anyone who did not get a chance to sign up or came in late who wanted to speak but did not get on the list? I don't wanna move on without, I think everyone in all of the.
Ed, sir, um, you may have to mention something about the U-Haul. Will, will you, do you wanna call in Town Hall discussing that? That sounds like a, a potential safety issue.
Don't get me started on that without a four-way stop.
Well, it sounds, it sounds like something that maybe we need to address or, you know.
Put a sidewalk in the front of my house and a never paying crosswalk. And it's another one of those middle school things where everybody's riding their bikes or walking. And there must be thirty people driving forty mile an hour every morning to run that four-way stop on the corner of Bob Marlowe House. On my house, it was a dead-end stream to the park.
So just as a side note on that, on that intersection, we actually had a discussion about that at Parks Board and we're gonna look at that intersection and what we can do, especially with that crosswalk, actually fading that crosswalk is one thing that we are actually, uh, discussed directly. So we are addressing that specific thing, just not here.
The only other thing I would throw out to you guys, have you ever, have you ever lived in Poolsville when we had a four-year drought?
Yes.
Raise your hand.
Four-year drought?
How many, how many brush fires had to be put out? We had a four-year drought. And what happened with the water then? Try and explain to somebody who just bought a million dollar home that they can't wash their car or what are their plans? Good luck.
All right, well, if there's no more public commentary, um, Mr. Hughes, Mr. Overver, can you please return? I think, um, the commissioner might have some additional questions for you to clarify. I know I have you, but what about?
That's fine, no.
No? All right.
Well, I guess we'll, obviously, the traffic concerns that you heard about and those will have to be, have their studies done and such. But, uh, welcome any, um, side from the Arrow team, people heading out of there. I'm not sure what, what you would do, but I'd be everything for you or, um, ways to address that. And probably the overall number of homes seems a little aggressive in that space for me. Townhomes versus single-family or cottage-style, I actually probably prefer townhomes than, than cottage-style, I think, in that area. And then the other, uh, aspects I wanna make sure we incorporate is, um, you know, that you've seen a lot with, uh, the, the two developments here, um, that are going in about frontage and, and kinda having a welcome, welcoming block to that frontage. So anything that's near the road should be facing the road and should have open access to the front of the house.
That's the, that's street frontage for, for ownership there, that's what I'm for. Okay. All right, I saw two numbers on your site plan. You have twenty by sixty-six and twenty by forty. Is the twenty by sixty-six the?
I think it's just the twenty by, it's just the lot width is twenty feet right now.
All right.
So it's not the unit, but the unit width will be twenty feet 'cause they're rear-loaded. Sixty-six, I think, just is our lot depth, but the units won't be sixty feet, six feet deep.
So your lots are only thirteen hundred and fifty square feet, right?
Yes, thirteen-twenty, right around there.
Twenty. Um, in your statement that you sent us, you have a discussion about the alignment with the comprehensive plan. Can you elaborate on how you see or how you envision this particular project aligning with our comprehensive plan? In particular, I can help you out. You, you discussed, or would you like to read your statement?
Uh, well, it's not my statement. That was written by, by Pat Harris.
It's from March early.
Yes. Ms. Harris is here.
Your statement is my statement. Would you like to come up and elaborate on, on how you envision this aligning? We're gonna have to refresh my memory since I wrote the statement.
Yeah, I've got it here.
Also, can you please state your, can you get a chance for the paragraph? Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Pat Harris with Alert Early and Brewer on behalf of the applicant. So we made three points in terms of the comprehensive plan. One was to encourage and fill residential mixed-use redevelopment. Um, the second one was support and enhance the town's land uses that serve various income, incomes and lifestyles. And three was to support a variety of safe, quality housing choices. So just big picture, as I'm sure everyone's aware, Montgomery County, Poolsville, there's a housing shortage in the entire D M V. Um, and the plan itself calls for more housing. The addition of townhouses, while you do have one, one project going on, that is townhouses, um, there's not as many, and I don't know the exact numbers, but our sense is that the adding townhouses includes another, I mean, you have townhouses, but it's a, a housing, another housing type, um, that we are providing. And, you know, from a diversity and income level, obviously, a town is at a more affordable price point than a single-family home would be. Therefore, encourage and encouraging, um, housing choices for people that are coming in at different price points.
And do you have a sense of sort of what price point is, is particular?
I don't know that we know that. Well, first of all, I'll say this project is.
Very early.
Very early and.
But is there a target, is there a target?
We were thinking in the five to six hundred thousand dollar range.
How many square feet is the home fee when they're done?
Uh, roughly thirteen-twenty.
The square footage of the, of the unit?
Oh, not the lot itself.
No, that was a lot.
So, yeah.
The house.
We're not, we're not sure yet. We haven't, uh, come to agreement with a builder and that, that's gonna be up to them.
Want to ask?
Go ask, go ask.
How many levels would you envision?
Um, again, we're not positive yet, but I would, um, assume two.
Considering that the open space requirement hasn't been met by this current plan, what are your thoughts to, of course, you will, I don't know where you could keep that many houses and not reduce the density, so. This is just a feedback. This isn't actually a question. You will have to reduce the density in order to meet the minimum requirements for open space.
I understand.
Okay, the interrupt right here.
Yeah.
The town does not accept fee and loo for forest conservation.
That's right, there's no fee and loo. And along those lines, I know that we have discussed that there is some runoff issues. And so would that be a contribution in aid from the developer in order to reduce the issue?
My guess is it would be an off-site improvement.
Yes, but a contribution in aid is, is valid for off-site. Just, just putting that out there.
Consider that.
It's something to look at.
Yeah.
And then do we have any idea about the fire marshal and these twenty-two-foot alleyways?
There's nothing. Run me through the fire marshal. I don't want to ask him before we read it.
Yeah, this will get run through Montgomery County where we will all.
Yeah.
We'll review it and approve it for fire access.
So there's a whole bunch of things, just let me interrupt right here for the general audience. There's a whole bunch of things that happen when they file for preliminary plan. And one of them is a traffic study, of course. And determining the actual traffic flows and sort of times and such. And then also the traffic coming out, what would be the anticipated runs on the roads and times and there's times. So, and then water, sewer, everything else that goes with that. And those are all preliminary. They're, they're, just because you do it doesn't mean the developer proceeds at the right risk in, in chasing this.
And we are pretty preliminary now. This is exceptional.
This is concept and we actually don't have any approval process for this.
This is, this is just us providing feedback.
It's a, let's, they're letting us know what they're doing.
It's appreciated. Uh, any feedback from the other commissioners?
No, not right now.
I will be, I will just say, uh, to reiterate what everyone else has said, is that, one, you have a right to be here. You have the right to develop your, um, within the constraints. Um, and we appreciate you bringing us the preliminary plan. Uh, I'm concerned about.
It's a.
Concept plan. Yeah, sorry, I think it's just concept plan. We're choice matters.
Yep.
Um, I'm concerned about the density. Uh, the traffic is definitely an issue because of proximity to the high school. I actually, um, can relate to Ashley because I use her driveway for pickup and drive-off. And so I, I too have been stuck there. I know from experience, um, that it is, it is going to be a struggle. Yeah, there are some concerns, but I mean, overall, um, it looks like you guys have some work to do and we as the town, uh, can't offer any sort of assurances or guarantees or sort of timeline at this moment, although we're going to discuss some things next, uh, because of water things that we are currently dealing with before we can proceed. So, unless there's anything else, I just wanna thank you all for coming and sharing your plan.
Thank you. We appreciate your feedback.
Thanks so much for your time.
All right. I'm gonna get to the next one. Onto old business, water systems redundancy plan. Niles?
Just give me one second.
I understand.
All right. So, um, at the previous, um, at, based on previous meetings at both the Town Comis-
All right, so, at the previous, at, based on previous meetings at both the town commissioners and the planning commission level, staff prepared a plan to address the long-term redundancy of the water system. If you recall, at last month's meeting, that was the key takeaway for us to explore further.
And the key recommendation from...
From Kathy.
Both of them.
Kathy and, and Pat was to explore the possibilities of well redundancy, specifically finding new wells and things like that. This, but at the same time, this parallels the ongoing project to remediate the town's water supply through PFAS. So, what I'm gonna talk about is sort of both of those things in connection to these issues. So the first thing is the well development process. The well development process includes reviewing the potential sites adjacent to the town that might yield the best results, well yield results. This also involves the town negotiating with nearby property owners to ensure agreement with the well location and to mitigate any interference with existing wells. This is in addition to the construction process, so those two, so it's first of all, identifying potential well sites and then developing the well. The entire well development process typically takes about two years to complete. Well redundancy, so as part of the two thousand and five master plan, the planning commission established a policy that should, the system should be redundant enough to ensure adequate pumping capacity to sustain six hundred gallons per day per household in drought conditions. Currently, the town is about five hundred and thirty-six gallons per day per household. When you have the, the houses that are coming online over the next several years, our system would be at approximately five hundred and six gallons per day per household, based on well yields. And it, just as a caveat to this, Kathy and Pat are currently working on, on those well yield numbers, just to give you a sense of that as well.
Are they working together on the figures?
Yes. And so, uh, yeah, uh, so then, the next, uh, so therefore, the town's goal for its well development is to increase the well yield of the overall system by at least a hundred gallons per day to ensure that the water system can sustain, sustain itself during severe drought conditions, so that's the overall goal. The town commissioners have already approved a budget line item of twenty-five thousand dollars for this coming fiscal year, with an additional fifty thousand dollars allocated annually for well development through the out years of the budget. The minimum cost for new well development is approximately a million dollars, which will increase depend, which may increase depending on location considerations. So that's just sort of a baseline, but that's where we're starting from, and then there's various other avenues that we can look from there. Uh, and then the note about PFAS remediation, the town is currently seeking funding from the state to implement a treatment centralization program. This initiative aims to minimize the number of filtration units that the town will need. However, the changeout of the media requires taking wells offline. So having more redundancy in the system ensures that the town can account for downtime events. So this is where the two interact with each other, and so that was just the way of addressing that. So timeline, this project is anticipated to last over the next three years, encompassing both the permitting and well development process, as well as the timeline for PFAS remediation. Um, so, uh, so I'm gonna sort of briefly go through sort of what we envision this timeline to be. So, twenty twenty-five, the rest of this year, is research and permitting. Staff will work on submitting the renewals for permits for town wells, this is something we discussed previously. The town can submit the paperwork as early as October twenty twenty-five, and that's our goal to, and this is just as a side note, we're gonna try to renew all the wells at the same time so that it's all in the same system. Going forward, in terms of its, uh, well renewals. Um, the permitting process includes public hearings with MDE, and these will likely take place in Poolsville. So during that process, we'll have a, a public process about that as well. Um, the town will need to testify on its behalf at these hearings. Additionally, in October twenty twenty-five, the state of Maryland should notify the town if it has received the state funding for the treatment centralization program. So at the same time, we'll know a little bit more where we are on that side of things. Then from twenty twenty-six, which is, this is where the wells and exploration and construction phase will begin. So staff anticipates completing the permitting process in early twenty twenty-six. In the meantime, staff will identify potential well sites and drill exploratory wells. Staff also anticipates the construction of the new centralization treatment system in late twenty twenty-six, depending on getting the funding. Twenty twenty-seven, well completion and next steps. In twenty seven, the staff anticipates being in the middle of the construction of new wells in the centralization project, so that would be the heavy construction time. And twenty twenty-eight is when we anticipate the completing of both projects ahead of the EPA's deadline for PFAS, which is twenty thirty now, twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty. Um, and then, the town expects to have significant data on the impact of new development on well demand as well. So we'll now, we'll have a couple of years of data on what's happening here. Um, so there's, that's sort of the timeline. From there, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the recommendations to sort of go along with this project. So one, staff should update the water capacity plan annually. So in January, when we, as we were doing our previous annual reports, we're also gonna update the more detailed water management capacity plan, which talks about drought conditions and things like that. And this is using the latest data, this will allow us to monitor the impact of new developments and the impact of climate change and various other factors, drought factors and such. Uh, two, the planning commission should maintain its current recommendation to withhold future water allocations until the PFAS remediation project is completed, and that no future water allocation will be made till after the town, uh, the town's water permits are renewed, and this in, in conjunction with everything we've already talked about this evening. Uh, when the town considers new allocation, the planning commission should consider the status of the well development project before making such allocations, as we've already mentioned. Note that based on conversations with the town attorney, applications with a conditionally approved preliminary plan are considered first in line for any potential allocation, so if there is allocation, that would be how, how the process would go. However, the applicant cannot proceed to the final recorded plat until the town allocates the water and sewer. So that goes with what we were saying, can't have an approved preliminary plan till after we have the available water. Okay? Uh, staff, lastly, staff recommends that the planning commission consider priority locations for well allocation when it becomes available. And this is something that we, when and if it becomes available. This is something we talked about previously, about the, um, target investment zone and the town buffer and things like that to be considered. So those, that concludes sort of the, the report and sort of the redundancy plan and timeline. Any questions?
No, it's great, I'm glad you guys, you know, I know you're taking this seriously, and it sounds like you got a plan in place, and I'm glad to hear that Kathy's working with Pat Hammond, because I know they, they, their conclusions were similar, but like, not totally the same, so, and I'm glad working with MDE too. I mean, like, I think the more people, more input we can get, the better, because we can't mess this up, you know?
Boss, can you help me with just the well redundancy numbers?
Yeah.
Just to make sure I've got it, understand it correctly. So we've got, um, the master plan says we should have a mass of six hundred gallons per day per household for back conditions.
Yes.
And we're currently at five hundred per day per household, that's...
That's based on the current conditions, so that's all of the current, the current accounts. So this includes the houses, the commercial businesses, all of that, then taking it, and then dividing it by, taking our output and then dividing it by, um, the, uh, I'm trying to blink, how I did the math now. But basically, to, to take the total amount we pumped and then dividing it by the amount we need per day to get to, to get to where we need to be. And I can't remember, I can give you the math, but I just don't have it off the top of my head.
That's pumping capacity.
That's pumping capacity, mm-hmm.
So it's the next piece then, at least, because if we're, pumping capacity isn't dependent on the amount, right?
Exa, it is, it is dependent on man. So everyone who, so when you water your lawn, or when you, uh, you know, use your toilet or whatever, you're pulling, you're, you're pulling demand into the system. So each house that uses it increases the demand on the system. So, and that varies by, by month sometimes, like, for example, in May, we, we pump less than five hundred thousand gallons per day in the system, because it, because of the amount of rain we had and things like that. And so, when we have more houses, they're gonna pull more water from the system, which will require us to pump more, because the system has to do.
Yeah. And it doesn't impact capacity, capacity is where...
Right, correct, but it's, it's the demand on it, yeah.
Redundancy, I think it's really important, and we should clarify this for everyone, that this is a production issue. Redundancy is a production issue and not a supply issue.
Yeah.
So this is, there is supply, but we are struggling, to some degree, to pull because of PFAS mitigation requiring us to take wells offline.
Right.
As the demand is pulling in, there, there is, we need that redundancy so that when we do have major wells offering, that we're still able to pull from our supply.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let me, let me interject as a, as a reference point. So last year, or the last couple of years, well two, which is the most production well that we have, has been taken off the system because we didn't have the ability to treat the PFAS that was present in there. We've since had put that PFAS treatment back in, and we're able to run that well. Other caveat is, is until we get a building up around the vessels that treat the PFAS, we can only run that, that well, the most production well we have, we can only run it during the warmer months. If it's, comes to fall and winter and early spring, we cannot run it because it'll freeze up and won't work. So one of the things that, that they've gotten alone for is to go ahead and enclose that, put an enclosure around it so it can run twenty-four-seven, if...
If needed, if...
It's not really twenty-four-seven, but they can run, it's operational.
Yeah. So, and, and I just want to clarify one other thing. The six hundred gallons per day per household is based on drought conditions versus what we develop when we are talking about development, that has the number of three hundred and twenty-five gallons per day for a single family and two seventy-five for a townhouse. So those are the numbers we plan on regular usage. What we're trying to do is create a buffer for, we don't plan on every household using six hundred gallons a day. It's the ability of the, the system to, to produce that amount so that, so that we are covered in the event of drought.
So, uh, two questions. One, um, is the six hundred gallons per day based on all of the wells being operational? Or is that with, or the, sorry, the five hundred and thirty-six current? Or is that with some of the current wells being offline?
So, in a way, it's, it's important to think of it at, like this. We can, when wells are offline, we can still produce, um, you know, uh, the coverage for the water, for the water that is being used. It's in those cases, though, when we need to add, so like this, so drought conditions also to me would consider the same thing as being a well out of system or whatever, where it becomes harder, we have to run, the well's longer, they have to do more hours, it's more likely that a pump will break, things like that, when wells are offline. So the system itself needs to have the capacity to handle a well being out, just like it would drought. So the two ideas are kind of similar, I think, is the redundancy.
Yeah, so the, uh, second question is what the implication of the drought conditions are. Does that, does that literally mean more people are using more water? Or does that just mean that, as you were just saying, that you need more pumping in order to get the same amount of water?
So, it, it, sometimes it can be both, right? So drought conditions, people do have a tendency to, like, water their lawns more and things like that. That's why there are times, like, when we have wells out of service for the PFAS remediation, we ask for voluntary water restrictions, right? So part of it is you're, you're having to manufacture more water in terms of pumping it than what is naturally occurring, which is the rain, right? That's a good example of why, last month, we had the, the lowest pumping data in, in a couple of years, um, because, for a month, because there's so much rain, people didn't have to run it as much. So that's where those two things sort of interact with each other, if that makes sense?
Yep.
Um, but there are things we can do also, you know, like voluntary restrictions and such.
So, um, in order for us to maintain our current plan of withholding future water allocations until PFAS remediation project is completed, is that an action? Do we have to make a motion to continue that, or do we just decide that we're not gonna make any changes?
Right, I don't think we need to make any changes, it's more just saying that, that at this point in time, we're not making any changes.
I'm just wondering if we need, if we need to make an official motion and say we're not gonna make any changes at all, or if we just leave it?
From this, we're not even as a company commissioners?
Well, so, so they made a recommendation to the, to the commissioners, and I don't think you need to make a motion just because you've already made that recommendation. It was more, the way that I wrote it and the way I was thinking about it is, this is to set it all up to know when the end point is.
Just trying to close the loop.
Mm-hmm.
Two months ago, we started opening the discussion about the water allocations and reassessing.
Yeah.
Your recommendation, my feeling, and just wanted to get the, get it out there, unless there's any other, is to not change our current strategy, just to not allocate any more water until PFAS remediation is completed.
Yeah.
I do have a question, if the funds that are set aside by the town commissioners are sufficient for the exploration, and do we want to consider making a recommendation to them, to consider prioritizing this redundancy issue in their next budget?
So the, so what I would...
And if that's even appropriate.
Right, what I would say to that is, we put this in anticipating that we will have to do, even before we had the conversation with Pat Hammond, even before Kathy made her presentation, staff understood that this was a priority that we would need to address. I think working out, you know, what that budget number is, is, and, and what we want to put away and such, that all depends. We will probably apply for a grant for this funds like we did, like we are doing for PFAS, right? So some of it is working out those parts. I want to speak for the priorities.
Is there a line?
Yeah, there is a line item, yeah.
There's a line, and I mean, the budget, so.
Yeah.
It's, it's already...
Yeah. Yeah, but that's the, sort of the starting point. Once we have more concrete ideas of how much we're gonna spend, that's part of the process of going through the entire budget and realigning all of the, all of those priorities. I mean, you can suggest that, you know, you can suggest a recommendation, I'm just saying...
It's, it's gonna natural, it's...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I know that last time we talked about prioritizing this and trying to, like, make sure that it was out there, that this was such a priority.
I can certainly convey that message my next, first...
What's, sorry, what's the, um, in terms of the budget for development of the wells, you know, beyond exploration, it's a million dollars.
Right.
That money?
The, so a million dollars is, is the, um, is the general, very vague cost for developing a well. Now, the question of what would we need to do to say get to the six hundred gallons a, a, a day figure, you know, that we discussed, is figuring out what wells we can get and what they can produce. So like, well two produces, I think it's a hundred and twenty gallons per day. If we have another... Per minute, excuse me, I misspoke there, yes.
A hundred and twenty would be a heavy problem.
You would be having that, um, yes, per minute. And so, like, looking at things like that, if we have another high-producing well, that helps us in one well, get closer to it. However, if we have to do one that's, you know, thirty gallons per minute, then you're, then we might have to go with multiple wells. So that's what I'm talking about, the budget depends on, on partially the, the, uh, where we get to in terms of the well exploration. So part of it is a chicken and the egg question.
Yeah, I, I was just curious if there's, or if there are funds sitting somewhere, like, if existing funds for that, that piece of thing.
Right, I mean, without getting into the weeds of the, of the budget, you know, there, how we prioritize things and how we put through things. We have reserves, we have all of this stuff, there's things that we can do. We just put it in a line item to do it, to have it there so that we can build that money and, and put in, as we know more concretely, what we're going to spend, and potentially get state funds and things like that.
And some of this, some of this money, some of these, these projects are covered by impact fees, is that correct?
Correct, and, and...
So people should know that, like, you know, it's not, you know, because if I'm listening to this and like, well, wait a minute, like, you know, my tax money is going to, like, pay for, like, new wells for developers or whatever, that's not necessarily true.
Right.
Impact fees, everyone that builds a home has to pay, I forget the fee.
Connection.
Yeah, a connection fee or an impact fee.
It's significant, and that, and that money is put aside and, and...
Yeah, and it's...
Goes towards, like, water and sewer and things like that.
Yeah, and so that's a, that's a good example of the pot of money that we can allocate and such.
Oh, hey, Jerry, you wanna make a comment? You didn't make it first.
Oh, hey Jerry. You want to make a comment? You didn't make it first.
No, I have a question. Uh, well two has a, oh, no.
It's alright.
Yeah, here. We're just going to scoot it down and then we can do that.
I can talk to me, that's, you know. Uh, no, well two, several years ago, we found out had a bacterial problem. So we put a sand filter on it. Now we're going to put a PFAS filter on it. Is the PFAS filter going to do double duty in addition to taking out the PFAS, but also taking out the bacteria? Get a twofer?
The, it's not a sand filter that was put, put in. There's a, there's a filtration system for the turbidity and then there's a chlorination contact time tank that goes in.
Okay, so that, okay, the tank, the tank is...
So, so when we, when we put...
Okay.
Let me, so when we put the, uh, activated carbon filtration for the PFAS in, it has to go before the chlorination contact time tank because you can't allow chlorine to go into the carbon because it'll destroy the carbon. So it, it's all...
It's a unified system, but it's not replacing...
Okay, but now I remember is the, uh, contact, you had to put in a bigger tank to ensure that the, the contact time required by MDE was sufficient to kill the bacteria.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's also important to note that, I remember Wade or someone saying that these PFAS filters don't just filter PFAS.
No, they don't.
They filter all kinds of things you probably don't want in your water. So our water would be better because of it in general, not just, not just the...
And the other thing to point out, Jerry, is the, that contact tank was part of the reason why we couldn't run well two all year round, because you can't run it in the winter. You can't run the contact tank. So by enclosing it, which is part of what this PFAS will do, will allow that well again to be run year round, even with the chlorine contact tank, so connected as well.
Yeah, I knew that part.
Yeah.
Is there any desire in the discussion or anyone else? Shall we...
I'm good.
I'm, I'm good with this. For the record, that was Jerry Kukowski, seventeen three oh six, twelve twelve, rural.
Three oh, three hundred.
Oh, it's three hundred, I'm sorry.
He moved.
Alright, uh, so this brings us to cultural arts district design and parking discussion. Um, we are currently at eight thirty and this is not a priority. So unless there is anyone in the audience who specifically...
Can I make a little more comment about the water?
Does it have to be on the record?
Doesn't have to be on the record.
Alright, then I will send you...
Just one comment, one minute.
Sorry.
Very short time. But I've been thinking a lot, this is revealing and it's been very helpful to hear about the proactive work that you guys are doing. So thank you. Uh, thank you, Lexi. Uh, so when I was thinking about this and I'm thinking, uh, my recommendation is, and I'm not a scientist yet, but my recommendation is that we think of worst case scenario in the next fifty years and then we double that. Okay? So we think about four, we think about we had that drought for four years, think twelve to fifteen years. Can we handle a twelve to fifteen year drought and can we not only survive, can be thrive and if people still want to live in Poolsville, okay? I give you an example, Lake Mead, it's near Las Vegas, it's a large lake. It's drying up. It's, if you look at the pictures of it, it's hundreds of feet that have dried up, that the lake used to be here. And the scientists will say they are surprised and shocked at the acceleration, they do not project this, at the acceleration of Lake Mead drying up. Another example I would give is the water supply, uh, the underground water supply because of farming and other things. The underground water supply that we have, and I think some of these things we're talking about has to do with underground water supply.
Correct.
It is, um, it was, it was on sixty minutes, but it, it's drying up. And it's, people are using it. We're not noticing how many mil, hundreds of thousands of gallons are being used. And there's really, they looked at the source of it and, and how much we have it and it's significantly less than we had prior. So we, the resources, the natural resources are, are, are deputy, are getting devastated and it's very, it's much more than the scientists projected. And I know you guys are very planful and you have scientists, but I'm saying the worst case scenario is probably much worse than we are projecting. So I want you to think like that, okay?
Thank you so much, Jim. We really appreciate it.
I'm, I'm worried, yeah.
I, I understand. I made it very clear. I appreciate it. And, and do believe that everyone, um, on this commission and on the town commission are very much invested in seeing the best for Poolsville. Everyone here gives numerous, numerous hours of their time and their talents, uh, to make sure that we are protecting Poolsville to the best that anyone can. So again, I appreciate your comments, but I think we need to proceed with...
One quarter back. And, but you guys are committed. I can see that. You work hard, you're committed, you're asking good questions. I listened to this discussion. But anyhow, I wanted to just share my perspective on that.
Jim, one last thing. Watch those meet, watch the meeting about water because global warming and droughts and all are discussed at, at length.
Where, where, where do I find that?
I'll, I'll, I'll give you the information. It's all on the website, but I'll, I'll send you where to find it.
Okay.
Good.
Jim Michaels, okay.
Mhm.
So, um, as I was saying, I think that this is not a priority discussion for this evening and we've already used those for a lot of time. I do not want to go over and restrict everyone's evenings. So...
Should we, uh, want to skip to the last agenda then?
I think we should skip to the last agenda.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Well, before you do that, I wanted to mention, like, I, I had a short conversation with Wade today, um, about, and, and one thing that came up was, there's two things I heard from a couple of business owners. One was over there by Christopher's, the, the path that connects like the Christopher's parking lot essentially with, uh, Dr. Delhan Park. It's just like a dirt path. And like I've heard people say, you know, thinking ahead, if like, if we have people in town, stuff like that, people parking where the community center is eventually, like that should be a nicer path and more formalized. Wade agreed. They're, they're going to work on that. And I also relayed feedback about like, we need some kind of municipal parking, like, you know, for like big events and stuff like that. We talked about that, we talked about that more. But I just want to let you know that that conversation happened, so.
Thank you.
Alright, I have a first on the motion.
Yeah, a second.
Second from Brian. All in favor?
Uh, okay.